Okay, this time we'll ask if the clerk will call the robe for the quorum.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Okay, all members are present tonight. Thank you all for being here. The next item that we have on our agenda is to approve the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented and advertised.
Motion to approve.
Oh, we have a motion by, excuse me, by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion on our agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. Okay, we do have our minutes from our joint public hearing on our comprehensive growth plan for Walker County held back on January the 27th at 7:00 PM. So we do have those minutes here. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the joint public hearing?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Say.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we have our regular scheduled meeting on the 27th, right after our public hearings. Is there any corrections or concerns about those minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Hart? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Okay, this time we do have a public hearing on our ordinance O-01-22 to amend certain sections of Chapter 4 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding alcohol beverage farm exemption. On this ordinance, there's just a couple of slight changes in the wording of this. And I'll read the paragraph that's being modified. It said, "The alcohol, excuse me, the sale of alcoholic beverages by the package to be carried off the premises shall be prohibitive in any restaurant, cafe, eating place, private club, or in any establishment other than a retail store or grocery store, or a state licensed farm winery owning a retail license for the sale of alcohol beverage to be consumed off premises, except for the removal of partially consumed bottles of wine as permitted in OCGA 3-6-4." And so what this is doing, this is adding in the verbiage of the state licensed farm winery is the change in this. So is there anyone publicly tonight that would like to speak on this? Okay, I see anyone that wants to speak. So we'll close out our public hearing. We'll go to our new business at this time. And under our new business, we have our ordinance O-01-22 to amend certain sections of Chapter 4 of the Code of County, Georgia regarding the alcohol beverage farm winery. So in this ordinance, we do have this as an action item. This has been through two public hearings now. Do we have a motion of the board to approve this modification to the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is amended. Okay, this one's a little bit longer. Let's read this here. It says, "A resolution R-01-0-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia to provide notice to the Walker County Board of Elections and Registration of intent to call for a special referendum election to impose a 1% sales tax for transportation purposes. Whereas on November the 7th, 2017, the citizens of Walker County, excuse me, voted and approved a 1% transportation special purpose sales tax, T-Splash, to be collected throughout the county. And whereas the T-Splash is set to expire early, as the original estimated amount of $25 million for transportation purposes will be collected prior to March 30th, 2023. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County have determined that it is in the best interest of the county to have the citizens of Walker County vote on whether to continue T-Splash. And whereas prior to the citizens voting on the continuation of the T-Splash, the county and the cities that are located within the geographical boundaries of Walker County, Chickamauga, a portion of Fort Oathor, Lafette, Lookout Mountain, and Rossville collectively referred to as cities, as required to meet and discuss an intergovernmental contract, IGA, regarding the distribution of the T-Splash proceeds that are collected. And whereas the county and the cities met on January the 24th, 2022, to discuss a T-Splash referendum and began the process of preparing an IGA pursuant to OCGA Section 48-8-262B2. And whereas pursuant to the state law, the meeting between the county and cities shall be held at least 30 days prior to the issuance of the call for the referendum. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County have a meeting scheduled on February the 23rd, 2022, to consider and approve the IGA informally called for a special election for the imposition of T-Splash. And whereas pursuant to OCGA Section 21-2-540, the Walker County Board of Elections by the superintendent is required to publish a notice of a special election notice in the Walker County Messenger newspaper, beginning with February 23rd, 2022 edition of the newspaper. And whereas February the 16th, 2022, at noon is the deadline for the superintendent to submit the notice to the newspaper for publication in the February 23rd, 2022 edition of the newspaper. And whereas the County Board of Commissioners is not permitted to formally call for the special election until the meeting on February the 23rd, 2022, which is after the deadline for the superintendent to submit the notice to the paper. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, that the superintendent is requested to submit the notice Exhibit A to the newspaper no later than February the 16th, 2022, at noon, so that the notice will be published beginning on February the 23rd, 2022 edition of the newspaper. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, that the board intends to formalize the call for the special election for the imposition of T-Splash at the meeting on February the 23rd, 2022, so resolved and adopted the 10th day of February, 2022. And there is an Exhibit A that basically gives the wording that would be on the ballot and also has the dates of the election, which the election will be held on Tuesday, May the 24th, 2022. The polls being opened from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. This will also, in addition, advance voting will be available at the Walker County Courthouse May 2nd through May 20th, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Monday through Saturday, voters may also advance vote at one of the four satellite locations, Rossville, Chickamauga, Lookout Mountain, and Rock Springs, beginning May 14th through May 20th, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And this will be the portion that the Board of Elections Chairman Jim Buckner would sign. So do we have any discussion of the board on this resolution action? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor of the board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution carries. Okay, this is Resolution R-01122, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to authorize the chairman to execute documents related to the landslide repair on Dottery Gap Road. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas the landslide occurred on Dottery Gap necessitating the closure of the road from Highway 157 to the bottom of Lookout Mountain. Whereas Geo Stabilization International, GSI, has prepared a proposal for emergency stabilization and repair of Dottery Gap Road. Whereas Walker County, Georgia is requesting funding assistance from the Georgia Department of Transportation in order to make landslide repairs. Whereas the board has determined it is in the best interest of the county to grant signing ability and authority to the chairman on this matter in order to expedite repairs. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, that the board chairman is hereby authorized and empowered to take all necessary or appropriate in the execution of any and all written instruments pertaining to the landslide repair on Dottery Gap Road, so resolved and adopted the 10th day of February, 2022. We have sent in the request to GDOT where we're asking for some emergency funding that they have in their LMIG program. We were able to get this funding last time when we did the landslide repair on Nikajack Road. We also use this same stabilization company that come highly recommended by GDOT. And we have asked once again for GDOT to provide 70% of the funding for this repair. And then the county would be responsible for the 30% of the funding for the repair. So I did get some feedback from the DOT engineer in Region 6 today. There's an email forthcoming, said there's four questions that they want answered by GIS Stabilization before they submit the final request to the DOT Commissioner. So he was hoping to have those to me today, but I had not seen those yet. So any questions of the board on this?
Mr. Chair, I'm very excited to see this. That is such a major artery for 157, the Cove, and I think probably all of us have had a lot of questions about the progress of it. So it would be much appreciated if you just keep us updated on that, so that way we can report back to our constituents. But real excited to see this.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
What is our just projected timeframe? So if we get this email from GSI, answers these questions, and we submit, what's our projected timeframe?
GDOT should be able to turn this pretty quick because we submitted this information yesterday and they got back with, today with, you know, through their engineering process. So I would think it should just be a matter of days. And then GIS says, once they get on site, it's about a four to five week project for them to actually do the work.
So I'm, as Commissioner Stoltz said, very excited to hear what we need to move forward with that. So we're thinking it's not going to be an extended period of time, it shouldn't be, or we can get those answers.
Yes.
Okay.
Should be able to get better clarification.
See what you find out, of course, yeah, so we can get a little better something to let people know.
Time line.
Yes, sir.
Good questions. Anything else? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
I think we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Say.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion of the board? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution carries. Okay, this time we have a purchase order, 2022-651, for $42,443.60 for a 2022 Ford Expedition four-wheel-drive command vehicle for Walker County Fire and Rescue funded from their 2022 Splash budget. We'd like to ask Chief Hodges to come up, if he would, and give us an overview of this request and its funding source.
So this is a part of our vehicle replacement programs. It's our annual purchase of, we purchase one vehicle each year. You'll notice we're purchasing the Ford Expedition. We've historically, the last few years, been doing the F-150 and 250s. Ford's F-150 production is paused right now due to some manufacturing issues they're having. They don't even know when they're going to be able to order, they can't even give a price right now for this year, so they have, they have no idea. So this, this vehicle will be used by myself. It's, it works, that's what I have when I got here for several years. The Expedition works well administratively and operationally for me. I'll pass my F-150 that I have down to the Fire Marshal's Office, which is more conducive with the slide-out trays and stuff of their equipment. So, and it actually comes in outfitted. This, this vehicle comes in several thousand dollars less than the F-150, so. You got any questions regarding that?
There's one thing that was surprising to me that you discovered is this, being Expedition, is still going to be $2,000 or $3,000 less, I think it was, than the way we were configuring the other vehicles.
That's correct.
So it's a little bit of a savings. And this is in your general fund budget for this capital project?
It is capital vehicles out of our budget.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve the purchase orders requested.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Purchase orders approved. Okay, their next purchase order is also for Chief Hodges, purchase order 2022-652, for $151,200 for 60 sets of the turnout gear for the Walker County Fire Department. Funding coming from the American Rescue Plan funding.
Again, excited about this. We've been talking about this for several years. We started a couple of years ago. Each of our firefighters has one set of gear now. Walker County Fire Rescue responds to a fire incident every day. It's just under 400 a year, with over 100 of those on average being residential structure fires and building fires. So we're not in a, we're in a high-risk exposure organization. We're not real slow. Those are large numbers for a rural county, but we are large and have a lot of homes. So, you know, we really wanted to, we started two years ago by buying the extractors for the gear we have. We've got those positioned appropriately in the county. So if we have a fire, firefighters then take the next shift, washes the previous shift's gear, and it's, it's hard to keep up, but when we're doing that. So this second set of gear is very important, and I've got a couple of things I want to read here. NIOSH, or the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, recently reported that nearly 70% of line-of-duty deaths for firefighters are due to cancer. Firefighters have a 9% higher risk of being diagnosed with cancer and 14% higher risk of dying from cancer than the general U.S. population, and that's according to NIOSH and the CDC. The NIOSH report goes on to say that an important way to reduce exposure over long term is to maintain two sets of gear so that firefighters don't have to wear contaminated gear to the next fire or the event. So that is our, that's been our goal. We have arrived. We're appreciative of the, of the consideration in this and the use of the funding.
Any questions for Chief Hodges? Okay, these 60 sets will get all of your full-time firefighters a second set.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
What's the life expectancy of a, a set of turnout gear?
10 years.
10 years.
It has an expiration date of 10 years. We generally, because we have a higher call volume and use, and you got a training every day, so we get, we get on average about seven years out of it if it gets moved appropriately and stuff to, from frontline to backup and then, but it's, you know, unfortunately, 10 years comes around quick as well because we, the last purchase, we, last year, we purchased 13 sets out of our capital, but then prior to that, it was 14 and 16 when the last larger purchase was made. So we're, that, the capital line item that we're purchasing, that 10 to 13 sets a year helps rotate that gear and, you know, again, not cause us to have to go spend out of our, out of our budget, a large sum of money every seven, eight years, so. This, this gets us to the two sets, and we should be able to maintain that rotation with our annual funding from our annual budget.
When you said 10 years, is the life, do they, do you take them out of service after 10 years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that, that it wasn't just a projected lifetime?
No, sir, they actually.
They go in service on a date, 10 years to that, pretty much to that date, they're out of service.
It's from the manufacturing date. So if we, if we had a set, we didn't use for two years, and they'll be brand-new, two years out, it's got eight years left.
Good deal. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, good questions. Do we have a motion to approve this request out of our American Rescue Funds?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion or questions of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved. Thank you, Chief. Okay, the next item we have is our approval of contract with Atlanta Coast Consulting, AAC, for environmental services for our landfill. We have Payne Gilli, our landfill director, that's here with us tonight as well. Would you like to speak on this, Eddie?
Good evening. This is our, our annual renewal, but this contract is actually for two years rather than the traditional one year. We've been using ACC since 2010. They've been involved with our groundwater monitoring, our methane monitoring, our design and operation plans for the, for the expansion. And they have about 200 landfill sites in Georgia. They do over $100 million in business with landfill work, so they have a great reputation and they're easy to work with.
Okay, very good. Again, this is a renewal, but instead of doing a one-year agreement, this is a two-year consulting agreement. And we, as Payne has said, we've had good service with them, and they get things done in a timely, efficient manner, so any other questions?
So you would recommend, we highly recommend we go ahead and keep this, just going with that.
Payne, do they come out on a quarterly basis, or how often do they come out?
The methane monitoring is done quarterly. There are about 25 locations that we check for methane concentrations. And then twice a year, they monitor our groundwater monitoring wells. We have about 35 wells that they sample twice a year and then report the data and results.
If they identify a critical value or panic value, do they follow up with you and then you look at intervention for that?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we review all those.
They do send those to, do they send those to EPD as well?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, good questions. All right, any other questions for Payne? All right, thank you, Payne.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve this two-year continuation contract with ACC Environmental?
Yeah, motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Three minutes approved by the board. Okay, the last item, we have our statistical data back from, starting in January '22 here, and you've got the prior years as well to look at. I won't cover everything in here, but I would say that we did have 165 people that registered to vote in January, 179 in December. And a lot of those registrations, I understand, are when people renew their driver's license. I know even when you renew them online, it asks if you want to register to vote. As Chief Hodges was indicating, the amount of call volume, it was 616 emergency calls for the Fire Department for different types of services in the month of January, which was handled by 946 responding units. Good couple of months for smoke alarm installation. We appreciate the, excuse me, the Fire Department team still actively, very actively going out and installing smoke alarms. So anyone out there that doesn't have a smoke alarm or have smoke alarms in their home, you'll contact the Fire Headquarters. They'll be happy to come out and put those in at no charge. New single-family home construction, even though with the rain and the cold in January, there was 14 new permits pulled in January, 17 pulled in December, so off to a, to a great winter start here of new homes being built. And then we added 1,034 followers to our Facebook, so I'm sure many of y'all are watching tonight that are new to our Facebook, so thank you for following and connecting with us on Facebook. And Joe and company also did 39 posts on our Facebook. Our transit numbers were down a little bit, but some of that's due to the holidays trips, but had 1,566 transit trips as well. So that was a pretty, pretty active month. Okay. At this time, this is, will we ask anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak and address the board to come up to the podium so we can get you on camera and by the microphone? And we do ask everyone to keep their comments to five minutes or less, just out of respect to everyone's time. So is anyone that would like to come and speak at this time? Yes, sir, please come forward if you would first, and please state your name for us, please.
I'm O.J. Miller, and I'm here tonight to share some concerns I have concerning the election integrity. We, as American citizens, one of the greatest rights and privileges we have is to be able to go to the polls and vote. And I got a question I would like to ask y'all and everyone here tonight. How many of you would love to go to the polls and vote and find out that your vote got diluted, defrauded, flipped, or whatever? Would that make you extremely happy? Anybody want to raise their hand on that? We have had, in the 2020 election, we have found out that, and I say we, I personally have not done this research, but I've found sources that have. But the, most of the machines we have have an algorithm implanted in them that is set to alter the elections. Along with that, we have evidence that the night of the November the 3rd, 2020 election, most of the flipping came out of China. But for example, in the state of Georgia, Donald Trump actually won the state by 403,265 votes. He having received a total of 2,669,376 votes, Biden receiving 2,266,111. They were flipped by, mostly by China through the internet. And I know the election officials say, oh, they're not hooked to the internet. They got a modem in them. Maybe they weren't flipped at the point of the, at the precinct, but they got flipped. Another thing that has been happening, and I understand that we use Dominion machines in the state of Georgia, and I understand that the state of Georgia mandates that you have those machines. But I've also found out that Dominion is, seeks to come in and do what they call a trusted build in reprogramming the machines, and they delete the 2020 election data. That is a criminal offense. It is, is a felony. It is illegal because federal law is that that data has to be kept for 22 months. It's already happened in the state of Colorado. It's already happened in the state of New I know from what Commissioner Askew has told me that the state has mandated that you use these machines. Here's my, my take on this. We need to stand up. If we don't want our vote diluted, defrauded, canceled, however you want to call it, we got to get rid of the machines. How are we going to do it? It's going to take our voice. It's going to take us standing up, say, "We..." It's going to take our voice, it's going to take us standing up, say, wait, enough is enough. You know, the definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over again and expect different results. Just saying, we'll have the same thing in 2022 if we don't do something about it. The, our infamous, and I call him infamous, Governor and Secretaries of State, Secretary of State, well, they might be Republicans, and yes, I'm a Republican, I vote Republican, and I don't mind telling you, but they've lied to us. And until they get their hands caught in the cookie jar, then they start admitting there's a little bit something wrong somewhere. There's been enough organic fraud already discovered in the state of Georgia to overturn the presidential election, and, and don't get, don't kid yourself, the two Senate races were stolen too, there's proof of that. So my thing tonight, my plea to y'all is, let your voices be heard. Maybe you can't throw them machines out yet, but let's do something about it, let's stand up to it. We've got to go back to paper ballots, we've got to go back to something that cannot be tampered with. For, me for one, I don't want my vote changed. And if you're here tonight and you say, well, that cheat really helped my cause, if that's your attitude, I'm going to tell you, you need to get a repentant heart, get to an altar of prayer and ask Almighty God to forgive you, because that is evil, that's wrong. Because you are infringing, with that attitude, you're infringing on the rights of your fellow men, and you need to think about what if the thing was changed the other way. This is not a Democrat and a Republican issue, this is a issue of honesty and integrity. We as Americans need to have things right, not wrong. Thank you.
Okay, is there any one more, sir? Yes, sir, come on up, please.
My name is Gary Williams, have one question on the new business, on the command vehicle, is that just buying one vehicle every year for, for the chief, or is that command being vehicle going to be used anymore by someone else and then to buy another command vehicle every year for the chief of the Fire Department?
Chief, would you address that, how, how often do we rotate that, your command vehicle?
We have 15 staff vehicles.
Right.
And we started the replacement program on those three years ago, we bought two F-150s, three F-150, three F-250s, and then we started buying each year, we buy, we buy and replace them. So when, when the last, when the, these first 250s were purchased, by the time we get through one a year, through that rotation, they'll, they'll be surplus.
That's not the, is that the vehicles, that's at the each fire hall, or is that just?
No, so that's, that's staff and command vehicles.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
A couple of things here I want to bring up about the comprehensive plan that was discussed very briefly at the last meeting. One is on page 185 of 195, it's talking about the Macklemore Resort Hotel and 18-hole golf course, lotting $33 million for that. And it says that the money will be from state funds and from private. Is that going to be like our state tax money going to a private golf course? If it is, I don't know that I'm necessarily or anybody else would be in agreement of that, $33 million of state tax money going for that. Also, and I've already, we've already discussed that with District Four Commissioner, there's basically a typo on there on Industrial Park Phase Two of, said $500 million, which was supposed to be, I believe, $500,000 for that. And another concern I have, on page 117 of 195, it talks about Macklemore Cove State Park and Resort. I hadn't heard of that till I read this, maybe y'all read it when you was reading over this 195-page document, I don't know, but I'd like to know what is, what's going on with, what, what is the deal there with Macklemore Cove State Park and Resort, that's on page 117 of 195. That's a few things, and my understanding from talking to District Four Commissioner is that this document will come back before, for discussion and for a vote sometime in March. Do you have any idea what time, what meeting in March?
Call the date, Joe, or let?
Well, quite possibly it'll be February 23rd, it's supposed to be sent to the state by the end of the month.
But it's very likely going to be on our next agenda, which would be February 23rd.
Next week, that's, it'll be two weeks from now? Okay.
Two weeks from yesterday, because our next meeting is going to be on Wednesday instead of Thursday.
All right, okay, and I probably have a few more questions then, I want to keep reviewing the 195-page document, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak tonight? Okay, at this time, we will, before we go into our executive session, we'll ask our commissioners for any public comments that they may have, so Commissioner Blake Moore?
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved, if I can ever be assistance, call, text, email, thank you.
Same thing, guys, we appreciate anybody showing up, your input, your suggestions, your opinions, it all, it all matters and it helps us do a better job with policy and procedure and government for the county, so, thank you, and like I said, call, text, or email.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, one thing coming up, I talked to Chief Hodges about this already, but on March the 31st, in the Fed High School, they're having a Career and College Day, so it's a good opportunity if you're looking for workers, the department head in the county, reach out to the principal there, set up a booth, maybe bring a fire truck, maybe car and bring them over, I don't know, just, you know, everybody needs help now, it's a way to reach out to young people who are getting out of high school and looking for work, so.
Good answer.
Pick up somebody.
Very good answer.
That's March 31st?
March 31st, I'll forward you the-
And just to reiterate what everyone else has said, thanks for coming out tonight, it's great to have participation and a great audience tonight, so thank everyone for coming. Also want to thank all of our employees in the county who do a fantastic job, appreciate everybody's hard work, and just to all the gentlemen, don't forget Valentine's Day, it is Monday, so do not forget that day. All right, thank you all.
One thing I did want to mention, Walker County and collaboration with Windstream, we were awarded a broadband application to expand internet to the unserved and underserved in Walker County. The proposal that was submitted and approved by the state will service 87% of the unserved and underserved community in Walker County. Some people have asked why we chose Windstream as a partner, they actually chose us, they were the only vendor that approached us with a plan and a solution and had the, the means to pull all the data together. Windstream, historically, their approach to the internet in our area has been done with copper wire, which is not fast enough, so this is a complete fiber build-out, so this will be actual fiber to the home, where every household will have the opportunity to have gig-speed service in rural Walker County as this is built out. So this is a, a big boost to Walker County, I understand there was somewhere around 200 applications that were submitted, and the state awarded 49, so we was very fortunate to be one of the 49 recipients. So as we get more detailed information, more timelines, a better, larger map that we can share with everybody, so you'll know exactly where all those fiber connections are being made, we'll share that with you as we move forward and get that information. At this time, we do have a couple of reasons for executive session, one being to discuss some personnel issues and also to discuss some cybersecurity issues as well. So I made that in the form of a motion, do we have a second to go into executive session to discuss those items?
Sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the board? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll stand adjourned at 7:42, and we'll be back after our executive session. Thank you. February the 10th, it's actually nine o'clock sharp, and so we do have one action item tonight out of our executive session, so at this time, Commissioner Stoltz is going to make a recommendation.
Thank you, sir, yes, sir. At this time, the Board of Commissioners is wanting to consolidate animal control and animal shelter departments. The Board of Commissioners requested the Chairman and Human Resources to formulate a consolidation plan for the animal control and animal shelter departments. This will include an organizational chart of staff and any job description that needs to be modified, as well as a tentative date for implementation. Finally, I request this information be provided to the Board of Commissioners during our scheduled meeting, March 10th, 2022, for review and discussion.
Okay, so that comes from Commissioner Stoltz as a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the board of this item before us? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Askew, and a second by Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, it is 9:02. Thank you very much.